I know we have a special presentation tonight from Lakeview, so if you're ready, if you're ready to hear it.
I think this is days already a little information.
Can you hear it?
Thank you for having us tonight. I just wanted to introduce some of our two specialists. This is Frathwa. And we're set up here along with some of our Lakeview Lions who are going to demonstrate computer science activities that we've been doing. We've had the computer science standards since 2014, so she's been working with the students and they'll be amazed at some things they've accomplished. She, since she's taken over the computer lab, has done wonders in terms of what she's taught her students. So, thanks for this opportunity for allowing us to demonstrate what we are doing at Lakeview School. We hope you enjoy it.
Thank you, Mrs. Baywood. So, when I moved out of fourth grade classroom into the computer lab in 2014, that's the when the computer science standards began. And I didn't see this coming, but it was quite a bold looking disguise because the students just eat it up and has enough. So, the first hour code was in 2014. And both of them personally did this. And when I saw them just eat it up, that was when I went to a meeting on it and the second year, that hour code, I think, just for hosting, I got an email and they said, "Oh, Spiro, we partner with them as well as many other companies and they're creating these robots called Spark. Schools, parents, robots, kids. And they're helping create these apps for teaching coding using these robots." Give us your information, we want to send you some. Sure, you can come to my house, send me whatever you want. And a month later, four robots and a DVD came to my house. So, those were the first four Spiros. We have joy with us tonight. And Pearl came next and the latest is our Spark Plus we have. So, after that, I applied for a Foundation of Dentville grant and received a class of 12. Now we have 16 and we're looking at two more coming in. So, I've been working with these students since they went first and second grades respectively. And it's just been a sheer joy of mine. I just chosen them out of their ambition, desire, motivation, and they work willingly, eagerly, they help others, and there's no conceit here. They stand out from the others and do it without conceit. So, on their own, just in the past couple of weeks, there was that, my class time, other specials time, and they just put together a couple in partners. Unfortunately, we have one absent, but Alex, Renee, Andrew, Maria, and Brooke just worked together and put together just a small stamp plane of something that they want to do for fun. So, they're going to run their programs one at a time and show you something they did for fun and then we'll give any questions you might have. So, it's a little bit of what we do when we have some time. So, Andrew and Renee did this in third grade, very little bit at the end. And the others in fourth grade throughout the year. But I really haven't been teaching with the get began this year. This is just what they retained from last year and wanted to do on their own. So, one of those first, Alex and Andrew, robot, break it up.
Hi, I am Pearl. In the computer lab, we do lots of coding. We go on code dot org. Alex likes coding because you can control everything. Andrew also likes coding because he can make stories and games using code. We program a character to complete a task. In some activities, you can make a game or story with themes like ice, games, Star Wars, or the game Minecraft. It lets us really do anything.
So, they're using an app that allows them to program with blocks. So, they're dragging, dropping blocks and allow them then to move and evolve into their fairly used language, OML, as a subspace of C language. So, then it allows them to learn to program in text as they move on. So, it's a good base, it's a good foundation, and that's what they're doing if you are curious. And when they're working code.org, they're using a block form of dot. And that gives them that base for learning bigger. Do you want to say anything to the speech with that subject?
I like coding because I can make my own games.
I like coding because I can control what happens.
So, they're writing any more than Alex had his. They're creating stories. They're creating their own games. So, it's math, we're reading, we're writing, we're doing math. And it really comes full circle, no matter what they're doing, they bring it in, they're doing math at this above grade level in order to, you know, make these angles. And we bring this on all different services, you never know what you're going to get here. So, their programs are very close. Go ahead, girls.
Our favorite thing about coding is the challenges.
They find themselves appropriately challenged, allows you differentiate no matter where they're all at. It's really hidden, you couldn't tell where somebody's at, if somebody's at a higher level or a lower level, and they all go together and pair programming models. So, you know, it allows everybody to, you know, not feel the frustration, but the appropriate challenge. And that's how, like, everybody's eager, nobody's falling behind, nobody's miles ahead of the others. And, you know, they came up with this for tonight, so.
Mike, we get a picture with parents, okay with the picture? Yeah? We get a picture with Mr. Ross Ross, the kids over there? You can bring your robots and stuff, we'll get it in the picture. All right, on three, say coding. One, two, three.
Coding!
Nice. So, yeah, we have our code next week, all through the, out of the district. It goes from, starts on the board, goes to the end. It's something that hundreds of millions of people around the world are doing, and we have been doing it for four years. And every year, we get better at it and the kids get more and more excited. So, it's, you'll see it on our social media, I hope you're following us on social media. We'll be tweeting it out and Facebooking it so everybody can see what's going on. And then there's also some invites, I think, to parents, to some, or some dignitaries.
This year, for the first time, we're inviting members of the community. So, we have the mayor coming, we have police officers and people from the library as well are coming. So, we invited all of you, board members, and we hope to see you there. Just send me an email, let us schedule a specific time. We're having a family evening a week from tomorrow, 6:30, 7:30. There is a tiny URL in the flyer in the Friday folder, as well as, you can follow me on Twitter or the computer lab website. So, you can RSVP, that way you know how many, and everyone can be on their own machine. So, the idea is that the parents can be doing what the students are doing during the day and see what it's all about. So, you're not going to come to watch them, what they've already done during the day, but, you know, try for yourself, do it together.
Great.
Really important.
It's good to see the evolution of what we've done. Like, in the beginning, we're kind of a hundred and fifty, and now we're at the point where we're trying all the way past the south. Great, and the kids like it. And we, we've done, Mr. Scow's organized a Skype with somebody from what? Did you order something the last?
Uh, yeah, Cleveland.
Coding guy, a computer engineer?
Yep.
So, we've been trying, you know, I don't know if everybody knows this, but computer engineers are very needed in our, in our country. We don't produce enough, we're importing them all. So, we just want to expose kids to something that has a lot of job growth later on, like, not that they're all going to do it, but maybe a couple of them will. Or maybe they'll just help build that part of their brain for some other career that they want to do. But it's, it's a, it's a great thing that we're, that we're trying to embrace and just bring this into the public, so. Thank you. And thanks for having us.
Is it, uh, hold the signal? It is. Good to see how excited the kids are. Okay, all right, moving on. Mr. Anderson, super kind comments, whenever you're, whenever you're ready.
So, we had Ryan's story program, which was an HIV, anti-cyberbullying type event given by a man named Ryan, by John Halligan, whose son, Ryan, committed suicide 10 years ago due to some HIV activities. The good news is, we had 150 parents attend our PM session, which, you know, obviously I'd like to have four or 500, but 150 was, was good. And all the comments were positive about the program and about the day program and the night program. We have our calendar on for discussion and approval on December 11th. We can always put that off if we don't feel comfortable with approving it on the 11th. I disseminated it and I also am going to be speaking to the staff about it so they all know. Valley U Sports opens up this week. Tomorrow at 3:30, if anybody's around, we'll be unveiling the new championship banners in the gym at Valley U Middle School. That'll happen before the girls' basketball game. Again, 3:30 tomorrow at Valley U Gym. People from the Foundation of Dentville will be there because the Foundation of Dentville Grant funded the banners. Not sure if anybody knew, but the banners we had before were really not of high quality. It's just a nice way to say it. And we have new banners, we're paying the gym, new lighting, new floor, the place looks really good in there. I just wanted to mention again that we have our Hour of Code next week, and we are doing that in cooperation with the Morris Knowles and Morris Hills students are coming down to help our kids code. They're going to send some of their coders, their computer, their AP, computer science students, down to help out with our kids. So, that, that's all taking place next week. That's my report for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Sandy's obviously not here tonight, do you have anything for her?
No.
Okay, so let's sit back. DeMaris, anything from the business administrator's office?
Yes, the new packet, it was emailed to you last week, the budget calendar has been revised. The county approval for the public hearing cannot be argued until April 24th. And our original meeting was supposed to be April 23rd. We have decided to change the regular, uh, in budget for April 30th. And again, meeting as scheduled should be approved in the autumn, in January as well. We're expecting those changes. That's it for me.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, nothing else? We'll move to the public discussion. This is the part of the meeting where a Republican come up and talk about or ask questions about anything that you're making in the district. We're going to open up the public comment at 7:43 PM. You just need to approach the table, sign in, and announce your name and address to the record. Everybody okay? All right. All right, seeing no public wishing to make comment at this time, we'll close the public portion at 7:44 PM. And we'll to the other. Other business. Mr. Anderson, you think it's all over the set with the plan?
Sure. There are no objections, I'd like to move items A, B, and C as a block. They include treasury school money, board secretary report, educational reports, the 12 minutes of our work session, an executive session October 9th, as well as regular meeting and executive session October 23rd.
I'll second. Okay. Anyone done? Comments or questions here, anything they didn't raise previously? All right, none? Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes, with the exception of the minutes from October 23rd, as I was not present.
Mrs. Lindsay?
I'm the same, yes, but I'll abstain on the minutes from October 23rd, regular executive session, because I was a candidate.
Mr. Lur?
Yes, I'm going to have to abstain from the October 9th minutes, because I missed about half the meeting.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes, except for the October 9th work session and executive session, and that's as well.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. All right, move on. You're good? Okay. Okay, new business. If there are objections, I would like to move items under personnel, as a block, items one through six, and we'll have it under time. Okay. All right, Mr. Anderson. Anything to review this, or we have our Home Life MLA requests. We have some instructional time, vacation time, cash, and some instructional time for our, the Hour of Code, which we just talked about. Some of the absence, also, I can apply. Cash, you know, some vacation time for.
I'll second.
Actually, Mike, I just decided to editorialize.
I didn't, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, he seconded.
Mike second.
All right, maybe you have any questions? All right, none, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Lur?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to the T R program. Mr. Lur, can you walk us, please?
I would like to move items one through six as a block. We have the attached list of workshops and expenses, the field trip requests that were sent from the packet. We have, excuse me, we have another workshop for Mr. Forte and Liz Costanza at the 2018 Workshop and Exposition in Atlantic City. Administrative internship for Lisa Alper with Mrs. Basely. And the Randolph High School students to observe Valley U nurses during the 2017-18 school year. And the Riverview School meeting log, discard books.
All right, questions, all this? Mr. Lur, surprised you wanted to move your steps?
I don't, but since it's been, since it's the recommendation of the superintendent, I kind of feel like I, I kind of feel like I have to actually appreciate moving, even though I won't be voting against it.
I appreciate your take, well, too.
That's what I do.
Okay, anybody, anything you have?
Happy to see Mr. Forte and Liz Costanza going to the tech expo. I know, I've heard good things about that, that program, and I know you've gone to it last week, so thanks for going out for that.
It's going to be very heavy on cybersecurity. I noticed, I saw all the workshops, because I'm on the committee to approve the workshops.
All right, nothing else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Lur?
Yes, no on number six.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Okay, we do not have any policy for reading tonight, so let's move on to finance. Mr. Lur, care finance, first?
Thanks, DeMaris. Under D, finance, we have one resolution that involves both the building fund, Chen, and all the chaps, listen on your agenda under D.
So, sure. Oh, Mike looked and I, I looked, but he's always much more thorough than I am. There were no checks for the conference, right?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, should I be on the piano? Can I second? All right, anything? Are you okay? I see you studying. Okay, just pretty sure. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes, but, I guess the only motion there is, I need to abstain on check number 3841.
Mr. Lur?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Moving on to operations, Mr. Cass?
Okay, no motions for transportation, but I will mention that on December 1st, I'm filming with the business administrator and the transportation supervisor to Randolph for a propane bus seminar and presentation. We did discuss that at our last operations meeting, and there's potential savings here on fuel and maintenance, so certainly something we need to take a look at, get more details on. Under building grounds, I'd like to move a proposal to have E and I associates do architectural engineering services to complete Phase II at the amount of $19,000 for the projects that are listed here. Security vestibules at the three schools, Lakeview Elementary School media center renovation, also Lakeview classroom subdivision, and also Lakeview restroom renovations, and then the Valley U Middle School gym HVAC upgrades.
I hope we've had some decent discussion about the, about the projects of the committee and the board in our last meeting. Despite that, we approve of Phase II. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Lur?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Okay, I think that's a good response. Yes, we do that. So, as, since, since our last meeting, we got the certification from the Morris County Clerk on the election, so congratulations to Mr. Anderson and Mr. Kim in the audience, who will be sworn in in January.
Thanks, sir.
And myself, congratulations to you. So, thank you, and looking forward to serving you, James.
Got a couple dates. Actually, myself, Mr. Capello, and Mr. Kim attended coffee with the cop at Stark Lux over Route 10, I guess it was a while ago or so ago.
Was it last Tuesday?
Yes. The holidays threw me off, but, but it was well-attended by committee members as well as police officers. One of the officers there was Officer Soto, so he was talking to the public and parents, anybody who came in, did a really nice job, kind of talking about his, his role as a class three officer. I also attended, I know Mr. Capello did the dance residency, which was the Foundation of Dentville grant, which I know they've done for the last few years at Riverview. Phenomenal program, the kids really get into it. Just a, a well-funded and, and great opportunity for the foundation to pitch in for something that's above and beyond the curriculum, and a really great program, talking about the cultures of each country, as well as different dance moves, and the kids really get into it, so it was a lot of fun. I did, last week, attended the town council meeting, a few upcoming things that they have. December 5th is their next council meeting, 7:30 PM here in the council chambers. The Redmond Press Builder will be presenting, so that's the potential development that they're evaluating on Route 53 by Station Road. Excuse me, so the Builder will be here presenting on December 5th, for those of you who want to see that. As well as Councilman Fitzpatrick also offered to do an informal meeting just over in the community room two days later on December 7th. I believe it's 7:00 PM, but double check, I believe it's 7:00 PM in the community room. He's just going to have kind of a roundtable discussion on questions about COA, about anything you have with, you know, the town and what they're looking at for different developments and whatnot. So, he offered that up as a, as kind of service. He happens to be leaving the council in a few weeks, so it's nice of him, he's been involved heavily, obviously, over the last few years, so he's got a lot of information he's willing to share. You know, one thing that has come up that we discussed in the security committee, as well as, I know Mr. Forte gave us some of the numbers for the bus cameras. We have cameras on all of our buses, so everybody knows that externally take a picture of somebody passing the bus.
Seven of us.
Seven of us, okay. Not that's right. Mr. Forte did a nice job of kind of targeting the areas where we see more activity of people passing school buses. To say that I'm shocked to see the number of tickets that have been issued since beginning of school year, I'm probably disgusted and more likely to word. There have been 51 tickets issued for people passing school buses this school year, so 33 of them were on Route 53. So, the police department is obviously supporting, stopping this, helping to prevent it. But I would ask anybody who's watching the video, anybody who's in the public, please send it out on social media, talk to your friends, get people to stop doing it, because it is a matter of time until we unfortunately have a terrible incident with a student in this town. So, please, I know we're doing everything we can, we're open to suggestions on how to make it even better. We don't want to, we don't want to give out tickets, we want to see that number go down, because we want people to stop passing school buses. So, I know it's something that, that we focus on, but any help we can give the public is appreciated. And then, one last note, not directly related with the, with the school district, but we'll kind of mention it because it's a community thing that has come up. There have been several burglaries in town, so anybody who's watching this or in the public or up here, residents, I suggest you be very cautious out in the town. There have been at least two in my neighborhood in the last week, so it's, it seems to pop up this time of year over year. I know the police have been out heavily trying to notify the public to make sure they're locking their doors, turning on alarms, and being careful and notifying the police if you see anything suspicious, which is probably the most important thing to do. So, that's it.
Anyone else?
I can, I can share with everyone if you have an RCP, it's not too late if you want to attend the Morris County School Board Association meeting. The next one is Thursday, December 7th. And although we are not a K to 12 district, it is a focus for what will prepare kids for for high school. There's going to be a lot of talk about what programs are in high school to help get kids prepared for college or careers. So, we'll be talking about AP classes, international baccalaureate. So really talk about AP classes, international baccalaureate, um, academies, dual credits with colleges, and all sorts of other things that high schools are doing right now to pave the way for students.
Um, I attended the Valley Assembly last Saturday. The agenda went pretty much as planned. The resolutions I could send to you were approved. The only one that was not approved is a language change to the charter school. Resolution, uh, was kind of somewhat of a minor language change. I think that pretty technical, but, uh, otherwise, all the resolution passed. There was a lot of discussion, uh, certainly around charter school philosophy in general, but also a lot of times kind of talking about the state, uh, the budget cycle and changing, what you receive from the state after a budget increases a shock. That resolution had a lot of session, obviously, in the past, and it was, was more that struggle of, like, there was a lot of discussion about the kind of, uh, what kind of impact that it had on the, uh, on the cycle. So it was a good meeting. So you got it?
We have substantial space on here, Ben, we always do. Maybe we just want to point out that the resolutions you just passed for EI associates is actually to address that. If the board is inclined, we can remove it, if it is, if you think we should remove it. My personal opinion is we should leave it there until we appoint an elder to the board, that we can take it off. If you guys feel like it's been on there long enough, that's how we sold the house and it's the other reason.
So we leave it.
Yeah. Just leave it on until it's done.
Right, got it.
Once we appoint a builder, we take it off.
All right, great. All right. Any other good remarks? I did want to touch on something Mike said. I also, I had a follow-on meeting with, um, the town administration board after the public meeting, and after some of the discussion Mike had mentioned. Um, just to kind of reiterate or hit home the, the point that's come to mind, at least, is that, you know, looking at these numbers that they're coming up with, where this case might settle in terms of the affordable housing requirements, um, the number of housing units that might be required in the town, um, and if they're going to be purely inclusionary, when we were talking about a four, five town ratio, um, the numbers are very large. And we gave a presentation, I think Steve did a fantastic job of the public presentation. I think we got to learn across, um, what those numbers mean, but I want to have a follow-on conversation, see more, get a good sit-down, um, just talking about, you know, if we're talking about two hundred or three hundred affordable housing units, and we do the inclusionary, what does that mean to the landscape of the town, and what does that mean to us? And it's, you know, is it obviously a huge, huge impact that probably the impact will be generally, like, ever handled yet? Um, they seem to understand that, I think most of the council members understand that. Um, I thought that after the conversation, but I think our message got through that those numbers have really meaning to us, and, you know, not speed it so much to the developments themselves, but the mix, the one bedroom versus three bedroom, all of that has a huge impact for us. So, um, again, a good discussion, and, um, you know, I think, I think our message is, you know, hopefully good. Okay, all right.
Do you have, do you have one additional link to mention? The Foundation of Danville, um, they worked through their initial kind of, um, set of grants that came in. Um, they did have some follow-on questions, and, uh, Mr. Forte and, uh, really, I, I only go to meetings, so I was going to say I was going to be there, too, but Mr. Forte is, uh, was invited to come in in December to go over their meetings to just run through some of the, uh, uh, grants, as well as talk basic procedural on how the grants come through and, um, things like that. So, um, really great to see that. I will tell you, uh, impressive to see the amount of grants they got this year. I think it was higher than normal, uh, which is great to see. They, they have a, um, educator, a teacher, uh, who lives in Danville, teaches in a different, uh, district, that is, um, uh, going to be willing, and probably talk to Steve about it at this meeting, is willing to, uh, assist with teachers in our town on if they have an idea, on helping to get that grant process flowing and forwarded and all that stuff. So, um, they're really trying to think outside the box, come up with some more of these dance residency type programs, the, the, uh, coding, like they've supported in the past, uh, things that are, um, what I would kind of call above and beyond the curriculum. Uh, so hopefully, uh, we'll see some more of those types of things coming out of, uh, the Foundation of Danville in the future, but, um, great to see that they are, uh, they've got a new, fresh set of, uh, uh, folks on the board, um, just, you know, they've, they've been doing a great job for many, many years, it's just, uh, you know, a little bit of a change with some of the folks on the board. And then also to have Steve come in and, uh, and kind of meet with them, I think it's a really big step, and they're in the right direction, so I'm excited to see some of the, uh, figuration, uh, momentum with the foundation.
All right. Everybody's good? We'll, uh, open up for the second public comment session at eight oh five PM. Same rules apply as before. If you'd like to come up and say anything, just do. All good? All right. Say no, we'll close the public comment at eight oh five PM. Uh, we don't have any further questions, correct? Uh, entertain motions for adjournment?
You'll be adjourned.
I'll second.
Mr. Anderson, uh, you beat him by just a second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Mr. Anderson, he second. Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay. We are done at eight oh six PM. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight.